All right, we'll call the meeting to order for tonight. And first up, we've got our citizenship award. And we have a teacher from Almira Elementary online who's going to talk tonight about our citizenship award, right? All right.
Okay. I am delighted to recognize Hazel for the citizenship award. Hazel is a bright and engaging student who always gives her best effort. She takes pride in her work and can always be relied upon to provide quality input and participation. Hazel has a love for knowledge and brings a unique and creative perspective to discussions and projects. Her quick wit and passion for acquiring knowledge truly set her apart. Hazel demonstrates respect and kindness to teachers and peers alike and is an excellent role model to others. Hazel absolutely embodies the role of a positive school citizen. Congratulations and keep up the great work, Hazel.
All right, if you have it all right for the national, then you can lead us to the national anthem, please. Would that be great?
To the flag of the United States of America. To the republic. Justice and justice for.
Congratulations. All right, we have one person sign up to speak tonight, but he is not here, so we are going to move on. All right, next up, approval of minutes. For last month.
Can I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the April 10, 2023 Fern Ridge School Board meeting?
A motion second to approve the minutes. Any discussion? You're not all of the favor say aye, aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. And next up is our enrollment report, and I believe Quan is online.
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. I'll wait for Michelle to pull it up. Okay, these are our enrollment numbers as of May 1st. Almira Elementary has average class size of 22.08 and Venita at 24.57. Altogether, at elementary level, we're at 629, which is three students above our projected enrollment. At the middle school level, altogether, we're at 284, which is down four students from projected numbers, budgeted numbers, I should say. And the high school is at 381, which is down 45 from budgeted numbers. Altogether, we're down 46 students from the adopted budget. And we are up seven students from the same time last year.
Have a question for you.
Sure.
Do those numbers take into account the option numbers to the option classes?
Yes, yes, that includes all option students.
Right there. It's right there. It says Almira High School at the top there. So it looks like we got eighteen years graduating options. Any other questions? All right, moving on to the revenue and expenditures.
Okay, this is our general fund revenue and expenses as of April 30th. We've received 101% of our revenue that jumped up quite a bit from March due to some state timber revenue we received. It was 840,000. So sometime between now and the end of the year, I will journal entry that and put it into a liability account since they will take that back from us next year. And then we have spent 68% of our operating expenditures. The same time last year, we were at 64%, so we're just a little bit ahead of where we were last year as far as expenses goes. And that is all I have unless the board has any questions.
All right, hearing none, we do need to take action on that.
Let's re-approve the financials from April 30th as written.
My second. Oh, sorry Andrea.
Oh, no worries.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the general fund revenue and expenditures. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all of the favor say aye, aye?
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thanks, Quana. All right, we do have our public speaking person here, and so. We don't, we don't mess around. All right, here we go. So Will, let's speak. You have three minutes and you know the drill. Thanks. Go for it.
My name is Brad Bellini. I'm retired from my high school in 2016. After 33 years of teaching, I've been serving ever since. So I'm finishing up seven years of teaching. I've taken long-term sub jobs at Lamont and Junction City, and I actually took one semester at Almira. Since I started serving, I've taught at Brookridge, Pleasant Hill, Monroe, Central Lee, Hartford, Junction City, Almira, 4J, and Bethel. I've taught pre-COVID, post-COVID, and one of the things I've noticed both COVID and all three of my long-term sub jobs with post-COVID is kids are different today. I taught AP when I was at Almira, and I took it this year. I took a two-week AP job at Junction. Plus, I took an AP job at South UG. And AP is probably the thing that I enjoy teaching the most. And I thought the board should know that both of the AP programs, Junction and South UG, Almira's is better. Our kids were more inquisitive, asked better questions, their work ethic looked better. And it's just nice to see how our kids stack up against the rest of other schools. The thing that the most, I mean, I get called every day, and I don't want to work about three, two days a week. Middle school kids are the toughest right now. In fact, Cal, Young, Chast, Cascade, Oakley. I, and even though Principal Oakley is a very good friend of mine, him and I used to teach together. I tell Ryan, I can't do to kids anymore. Fern Ridge is the only middle school I have to teach at because the kids still are, I'm going to use somewhat respectful, and they get to work after I ask them one time. I do a hearing test at Almira and Fern Ridge. After I tell them we're going to start, I find that listen. And that's exactly what you hear here. Kids are quiet and ready. Four or five times, and I enjoy teaching at Lamont. It's a very eclectic school that put your phones away. Mr. Old, I've asked you three times, ready to start. Kids at Almira, one time, consistently, one time. I don't think I've ever had to ask an Almira kid at the middle school or the high school to put their phone away and ready to teach. That's every day at the other schools. Their work ethic, their attention span is not as good as it was before COVID. The kids in Fern Ridge have dropped less than any other school I've checked. And I'm not prejudiced. I mean, if the kids here were worse, I'd tell you that. You've, you've listened to other subs who teach at, especially the high school. They go, wow, I'm on sub at Almira. And even the Fern Ridge kids, I, I think I've picked two of my Fern Ridge kids out this year because I just wouldn't be quiet about it three times. But one time, that happens every day at my other schools. And so I don't take jobs except I'm down to really Lamont, Junction, and Fern Ridge.
I, we, your three minutes is up, so.
But I just wanted to let you know that.
I hate to stop you when you're saying some great things about it. Well, we really appreciate you coming in. Thank you for taking your time to come out here and relay that.
Yes.
About the boss.
All right, well, thank you. I really appreciate it.
We can go now?
Yeah.
We're having dinner. Mr. Old doesn't have any questions. That would be the shooting against the Antkins.
My brother was there. Can I always ask him that?
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to reports, and first we'll go with Mr. Wang for the student trip to Germany.
Thank you. John Wagner, German teacher at Almira High School. Wanted to thank the board, the super-dinner carpenter for giving us the opportunity to travel to Germany. It was a total of four students and two chaperones, my wife and myself. We were gone for 12 days, didn't lose anybody along the way, no arrests, no major problems. We did have some challenges, lost luggage, canceled flights, et cetera, but we had to improvise, be flexible. And kids enjoyed it. Kids got along well. That was one of my big concerns is being together basically 24/7 for 12 days. That can be a stress, and they got along very well. And I think the coolest thing, though, is that they're wanting to travel more. So I still have them in class, and they're talking almost every day about wanting to go again, wanting to go this summer. They're making plans, talking about where they're going to go to. Some students are saying, can we go on your next trip? So, and also younger students. German too, a bunch of sophomores that are very much interested in going. Motivated group there, and so I hope that it's not the only trip that will happen from our school district, but hopefully it'll be starting something that will happen in the future as well.
What, what, what major cities did you go to?
We went a lot of places, so the students were primarily responsible for deciding what the trip would look like. And so we had a basic plan. We ended up traveling to seven different countries, cities, seven different countries. We had a rental car, which we had to rebook because we lost the rental car because of our lost or missed flight. Had to redo that. That was one of the challenges. But some of the main destinations that we went to, in the north, we visited an exchange student that we had here last year, Kinas, that died in the north of Germany. We went, stayed in a castle along the Rhine River. Went down to Munich, saw the famous Neuschwanstein Castle near Munich. So just lots of good memories, lots of learning experiences. So I found that from my own experience and from others that there's no better teacher than seeing the world. And so the students got to see that. Some of them really for the first time, seeing something international like that. And it was, it was eye-opening for them, so, but yeah, thank you for that opportunity.
Thanks for, I want to thank John for, we took the lead on this, we tried to support him, but these trips were a lot of work. It was a good event, I don't know. You know, Mr. Bellini, I was here, I traveled to him and students to Japan and DC, and it's, it's a lot of work for the supervisor and a lot of stress. They made it back and appreciate you for taking that on.
I was in Germany a few years ago, biked across Austria. And we neglected different German dictionary because we thought our 10th grade Spanish was, that was the same state.
Spanish mentioned through Austria?
I think, but Aus, I mean, Germany and Austria are so, then you're so close to other countries. We just opt to train the test.
Yeah, so that was very impressive for the students and all the countries so close to each other. Let's go to switch one. Let's go to France. So, yeah, good experience for them.
Train systems.
We didn't experience that. We did buses, public buses and public shuttles, but we didn't do the trains because we had a rental.
All right, well, thank you. Appreciate you guys. All right, we're ready for the Fern Ridge Middle School presentation. Mr. Carmen, how do you give a gift? Thanks for Olivia. I didn't set Olivia Johnson up.
So thank you. We're going to talk about just, really, there's, there's so much going on at Fern Ridge, so much has happened at the middle school this year that we can only really share a small part of that, but we'll do, we'll do our best here. So just, just something that you get to see over here, our enrollment trends. It kind of peaked here, but we leveled up here. We're a little bit lower than, than we started the year. But we had, we had some kids moving out of the district, and we had a couple end up in WLA and everything, but we're expecting to get a fairly good size fifth grade class coming up to sixth grade. And we have our seventh grade class right now is fairly small. So moving right along. We, this year, we had a lot of new staff. I just want to recognize those who came on board this year or rejoined us this year. These are our reclassified staff, Eric Anderson and Marla Black and Katie Miller and Danielle. Angela William and Samuel is our newest specialized IAs that joined us, and we have Daniel Moore, who's our class I. She works with students who have some severe behavioral challenges who don't, who aren't on IPs. And so that's our reclassified staff, and they've been amazing, just super dedicated, super talented. And they sort of lights down, we have Mike Cannon doing our music. Been in choir beginning in dance, and we have intro music and, and also done some other interesting things with in the intro music class. Marty, what this is our eighth-year science teacher. Jean, I think her name is, student columnist Go. She's our, one of our new specialized teachers, River Hardy, seventh grade, UCLA. Casey Mock came in in October as our new counselor, and Corbin Franklin joined us in January. Teacher we had as an IAs there as an assistant for Miss Hunstein, her about half year, and Corbin's joined us and has been phenomenal. Really, really excited, really happy with the apartment of, and how they built together. It's been a lot of fun. So, and we have some transferred staff who have been kind of chelten around. Shannon is our Ridge's teacher this year. Last year she was in the building as Ridge's I. Deborah Lloyd was our, she recognized her as our former GLB teacher and English language coordinator for the, for the district. And now she's our fantastic sixth-grade language arts teacher. And Heather Hunstein went from being our sixth-grade language arts teacher to, to our AP teacher, so we've had some chelten around. This is in a weird order, but, sorry. We were really excited about some new facilities upgrades, and this isn't everything that's happened this year. This is just some of the more noticeable things. For the longest time, since I was a student there, we had what seemed to me like just bedroom doors, just hollow core doors for the classrooms and the library wing. And so we finally got some good solid doors in that way and other places in the building. We had new lighting and commons that were, that were updated and were energy efficient and much brighter. It's been really nice. And the carpet is banned parts are really good. So just, and that's thanks to a really hardworking facilities and maintenance staff. They've been really, really good to us this year. And I want to mention that our A-tracks has been got a nice overhaul over the summer, and then they've been working tirelessly to just fix all the little kinks and stuff to keep us comfortable in our building. It's just been, they've been working really hard. So again, you see all these new, new staffing changes, and there's been just, just a lot of changes. And there have been some of our staff members who have been really great at helping our new teachers and new staff get integrated and, and get their feet firmly planted in the, in the building and, and help them feel at home and, and adjust. Our three specialized teachers and two of them are new this year, and Ryan Brown, our veteran specialized teacher, has been especially fantastic for just mentoring the, the two new specialized teachers and open them up in, in a way, so. Something that we introduced this year, it was developed over, starting at the end of last year and through the summer. Three of our teachers got together and developed a curriculum for a school success class. And we'll go through all of this, but for sixth grader, the sixth grade and seventh and eighth grade curriculum looks slightly different. And it's just, part of it was addressing some of the, some of the challenges and difficulties that our students had around organization and around planning and setting goals and, and some, some basic classroom survival skills and things. So they developed this curriculum to help them start the year. Every single student in the school started their, started the year with this being their first period class, which is exploratory classes, 30 minutes, 35 minutes a day for four days a week. Just covering all these things that, that middle school students need to be successful in middle school and to develop, develop skills and habits that they need. And they also touched on some of the, some of the soft skills, like foreign personalities and strengths and interests and do things like setting and monitoring and achieving goals and things like that. It's been a fantastic success. Kids really, have really grown. And we also have, just wanted, I'm not going to name all these here, it takes a really long time, but we have a lot of opportunities at the school for enrichment, and some of them have been newly developed this year. Our electives, this is a list of our elected in that league. We've got all of them here. And a lot of them are centered around literacy and history and, and I just getting to the world a little better. And then our exploratories, as you know, that it's, a lot of it is teachers choosing things that they're interested in. They want to sure, they give them something, a fun way to start the day. Exploratory, there are 35-minute classes at the beginning of each day, four days a week. And these are most, if not all of the things that have been offered as exploratories so the kids get to start their days in, in a, in some pretty interesting ways. So, and with the weather changing now, finally, we have a lot more outdoor options too. So I want to turn a few minutes over to our amazing, some of our amazing leadership students that are here to talk about some of the things that they've been up to this year. Our leadership past led by this past, that have been extremely busy, kind of had just a major influence on the overall direction of the school. So let them talk about, talk a little bit about what they've been doing.
All right, so I have a question for this. We'll let the kids go first. I did originally only have two coming tonight, so Orban Graham and Bree Rayly are also here tonight.
Hi, my name is Olivia Hungry, and I'm the Leadership Spirit Coordinator. I spend time organizing my team and making sure our spirit days are what the student body wants and well-participated. This year, leadership has accomplished so much. We have started doing spirit days every other week. The goal of our spirit team is to make every student feel as though they are included in our school. Another thing that leadership, another thing that leadership has done this year was our glow dance. That was so much fun for all the students that came. Our whole student body came together and was able to donate 1,662 pounds of canned and non-perishable food items to Kuanas Food Drive this year. Okay, this is Corbin.
My name is Corbin Graham, and I, I am in the eighth grade. This year, leadership got the opportunity to go to the Applegate Regional Theater to help organize and clean up the space. We have the best staff at FRMS. They were able to participate in two staff for student games, one volleyball one and one basketball one. This was a huge fundraiser for school, and it was so much fun watching students and staff battle it out on the court.
Hi, my name is Nervy Pew. I am in the eighth grade, and I am the student body president for FRMS. And I'm here to talk about the rest of our constituents' leadership has done this year. This year, we were able to do a teens and tweens toy drive for the Santa Project. We collected $200 in cash donations as well as books, toys, and other teen items. We had our student store open all year, and we even opened it up in the morning for students. We did a fill the cauldron fundraiser to help raise money for our dances and other school activities. We then had our first dance. That was our Winter Wonderland thing. Last but not least, we did our velograms for Valentine's Day that students could buy. Leadership ran it during each grade's lunch. We had a lot of fun and success this school year with leadership's many accomplishments.
All right, so just some of the things we were able to do this year. I listed up by great groups that we were able to do. Your fees being expanded to twice a month. We did explore a little more than that, but that was a little too many. Our dances, we did the winter one in the indies and those loadings this year. The student store, we opened it in the morning. We noticed that kids weren't coming as much during lunch. And then we got some new products, and we also did an input box where you get kind of people's idea of what they wanted to be at the store. Community outreach, we helped with the Almira Elementary's family fun night, the Applegate Regional Theater. We did a work party there one day where we went out and just moved some stuff around for them, cleaned up for them. We did the canned food drive this year and the Santa Project for the, or the toy drive for the Santa Project. And then plans for next year. It is going to be a full-time class next year, an elective. So I did opt for having a systemic and a behavior component next year. And then much more community outreach. I want to get these kids out into our community and really feel what it's like to be a leader in the community. The answer is we wanted to add one more, so we're going to do a winter flow dance, Valentine's dance, and then sprinkling. The fundraisers, we'd like to add a couple more. These were just ideas. We're going to continue with our three from last year, though. Our from this year, sorry. The student store, open more frequently, better items. Spirit, I would really have that school spirit there for them to buy, even with their high fives. And then more the community outreach. Applegate again, canned food drive, Santa Project. I'd like to do a field trip to City Hall just so that they can see kind of where leaders in the community go and where they, you know, work and do their job. And then student body dress-up day competitions, grade-level competitions, and school-wide kindness projects. One of the big, three of the big things we're planning pretty much here.
I just want to say thank you, Cassie, for everything you've done with leadership this year. It's been amazing. You've been an amazing advisor. Good job.
Yes, kudos. This was Lori Daniels. That's fantastic to hear.
Still going to mention, like at the student store, that is, those who may not know, that's something where they can spend their high five tickets. And those are tickets that I'm staff give to the students for any sort of good behavior, anything that's where they're following the rules or being especially helpful or kind. And they can go and spend those tickets at the student's park all on hand and full. So anyway, one program we brought into this school that the high school also brought into the sources of strength. And this is just a, if you get an overview of what it is, we have our adult advisors were trained at the end of the summer last year. And, and then we, we got a group of 13 students from all grade levels and from wide, wide variety of backgrounds. And they were trained as, as student leaders, and what it is, as it says up here, it's an evidence-based, relationship-centered, upstream suicide prevention and youth wellness program. And what upstream means is we have the crisis of, of the mental health crisis and kids who experience anxiety and depression and things like that. But that's, those are like the in-the-moment crises. Upstream means just what did we do before that? But that's, those are like the in-the-moment crises. Upstream means just, what do we do before that? What do we do to prevent all that from happening before it even gets to, uh, crisis and depression and things like that. And that has a lot to do with just building, uh, building a more positive school culture. Um, and so they do that. Still, our group is still in the planning stages. They, they, um, meet once a week now. And, um, and it's all about positive cultural change. It's about changing the cultural norms in the school community. So it's more vibrant and more accepting and where students can find, discover and hang, and, and learn to rely on their own personal sources of strength. So, um, it's a fantastic program and the kids have been involved in it so far. It's been really amazing. So, it's been really helpful. So, can I click it from here? Does that, that work? Score is still coming in. And, um, we finished eighth of the science and we finished, uh, the ELA testing and we finished the sixth and eighth grade math. And we're still waiting for the, a lot of those results to come in. And seventh grade is starting this week. So we don't have, uh, a full picture of seventh grade now. And again, a lot of these will be, will be final and official and we'll get to see those first next fall. So this is what we have so far. Our eighth grade science had big success. They had twenty-nine percent, um, meet or exceeded the, uh, standards, grade level standards. And that's up that thirty percent or twenty-one percent, sounds a bit low. It's actually, it's significantly above the state average. And it's also up on fifty percent last year, which is a, a big credit to our science teachers to do, to do a fantastic job. And our students are just amazing. So, um, our eighth grade, seventh, eighth grade, um, ELA is right around the state average. And there are some, we're seeing some strengths in seventh grade writing and in, um, and just eighth grade in general. So we're looking forward, not only seeing those scores when they come in, they're official, but being able to look at the target data and drill down into where our actual strengths and where our areas for growth are. So we can set goals with our, with our department teams or those GLCs and we started implementing the state's interim, interim assessment system this year and, um, interim assessment is just what it sounds like. It's a whole system that the state provides. That's formatted in the same way as the state's summit of assessment, but it can be broken down into smaller components, into standards and targets and things. And teachers can choose smaller assessments that fit within their, the units that they're teaching. And using the symbol form as a state assessment to, um, to really, really gauge where they are in relation to the actual state standards and, and where they're going to be with the state assessment. It's a really great, uh, really good tool. And they can actually even pick out individual items from passing stuff and use those for, for warmups or for training at the end of the, at the end of the period and things like that. So we're looking forward to getting that fully implemented next year as a, as part of our ongoing assessment through the year. And this is an extension of what I'm talking about, just building, uh, building a solid professional learning community. Um, and working with the, with the standards. Last year, we selected our priority standards. Um, each department went and did that. And had a lot of discussion, developing a common understanding of what those standards mean and how they can communicate those in a way that's accessible to the kids. And then they vertically align those standards from sixth to seventh to eighth grade. So all the teachers in every department. If they're an eighth grade science teacher, they know what's being taught in sixth grade and seventh grade and they know what they can expect their students to know and understand when they make it up to eighth grade. And that was done across the departments. Um, and last fall, they, they continued to develop this, uh, very accessible learning objectives, taking the language from the standards and making them a little more comprehensive and accessible to the students. So the students know what, um, what they're working for and what the objectives are of, uh, of each unit and even down to the lesson and stuff. So this year, throughout the year, we've, uh, each department has been working on their proficiency skills. They take the standard and they develop, it's kind of like a rubric, but it's, but the language is based around, uh, each standard. So they can use those for students and teachers, uh, to measure where each student is with relation to each, uh, to each standard. Uh, and developing common formative assessments with, um, within each department. So when the departments meet together, they have some, some common things to talk about where they can, they can talk about how each class and each class period and each grade level is doing, uh, with reference to specific standards. So, and again, we continue to, uh, use interim assessments. Next year, what we're, what we'd like to do is to continue refining the priority standards. One thing we ran into this year is that some departments select way too many priority standards and it was just overwhelming. So we want to really refine that process and decide which of those standards, uh, can be emphasized without violating the other ones, but, um, and then we're looking forward to, like I mentioned before, called implementation of the, we're getting interim assessments. And just refining our continual improvement cycles within the departments, um, where they're, uh, kind of improving the way they, they look at their, their constant data and where they support and help each other out and identify, um, strengths in the instruction process and also areas, uh, areas of growth and just, just continue to improve together and, and build each of them. So. We were done. Okay. So, uh, I wanted to invite the board and everybody here to a couple of, of upcoming events here. Uh, Thursday, June first, our band choir concert. It's the last one for the year and that's at six o'clock. I got the time right. It's at five. There's, okay. Right. Um, sometimes it makes sense because the kids have to be there at half hour really. Anyway, uh, and then Tuesday, June thirteenth is our big celebration, our eighth grade promos. And, uh, really, uh, and that whole day is a big celebration. They, there's a, that was a school party and barbecue there. It's a whole lot of fun. So there is tons and tons of other things that we could have talked about. I have a whole list if you want to hear more, but I think we obviously want, because there's an agenda. So, any questions from the board?
I have a question for Olivia that's off the slides. Olivia, when you and I were working together, we were writing art grants. Are you writing in work grants for the district? You know?
We're doing, we do the art and country fair grant and we've got that the last couple of years. Um, this last one, we just wrote, um, it's going to be used for, um, stop animation cameras and supplies. And the goal is that the art classes will, they will be able to make, um, little movies that eventually at some point the music class will be able to do the soundtrack to the movie. Um, so they'll be kind of synced up, but they can also be done with, um, any other, any other classes, right? And, and, and leadership can use it to make announcements because stop motion animation will work with any kind of message and content. Um, and we're really excited about that. And that was fun for in country fair this year. Um, the other one that we got from the art and country fair recently was the PASS IA. And they gave us, I want to say two thousand dollars to buy prizes and stuff like that to help support and fidgets and everything else that the PASS IA needs for that. Um, and then we're always looking, you know, in, in my dream world, I need a billion dollar, um, we have to get better STEM science rooms. And that's kind of what I would like to, if you know of a million dollar grant, let me know. I'll buy it. But yeah, we're always looking for grants and we're always looking for ways to supplement the, the district.
I've always appreciated your grant for your, your, um, that all your eyes across all your cheeses. You're very good at it. Um, next. I'm giving you a compliment. Just want you to take note of that. Also, when I was looking through the admin reports that we did, the number of classes, the exploratory classes, I thought were cool. I thought, boy, if I was in eighth grade, I'd want to take these classes. Yeah. And so I may come over and start taking these classes.
Any kind of, any kind of, yeah.
Is there anything in this group of classes, either one of you or any of the three of you can answer that, um, would, um, help get kids or I don't even know if it would be an interest for somebody in this school, if you guys can tell me. And I just realized you were the first grader in my class and like finally my, my. I, I'm like, okay, wow, I just dated myself on that. Um, he did a great job. He's a good kid. He's a good kid and a great mom. Yeah.
If it makes you feel better, Sam was a parent volunteer when I was at Veneta, in Miami.
So, it's just like, I don't know. But the, the question I'm asking is, would you guys even be interested in, uh, a class or is there a class that, you know, how, how do you be successful in high school?
So, yeah, we're, I don't know if it's going to be specifically on that topic, but there's, um, Mr. Moore is going to be teaching a life skills, yeah, class. And the kids are super excited about it and he's super excited about it. And it's, we're calling it Adult in 101. Um, and it's going to be teaching the kids, not like things from how to change attire to how to open a baking account, how to balance a checkbook, how to fill out a job application, how to practice, they're going to practice job interviewing, they're going to, um, self-management, self-organizational skills, um, how to apply for a loan, what to look for when you apply for a loan. Like if you go buy something at the, a TV, what's the best way to finance it? Um, and just all those kinds of, of stuff. Um, and I think it's, the kids are really excited about it so far. It's the most popular. Everybody wants it. And then, so that was, there's that. And then a lot of what, in terms of what you need at high school, since a lot to, to make it through high school, that's a lot of that is covered in the eighth grade school success class. Um, when, when they put together that curriculum, um, we've based a lot of it on Abbott principles from when she used to teach Abbott at the high school level and her experience teaching at the high school level. And that's what she did before she came to us. She taught high school language arts in Mapleton. So she took a lot of that and unfolded into that classroom, into that.
A lot of it's like, like no thinking and classroom engagement and.
Carnegie notes.
Conversational skills and, um, open, like, open discussion.
Can, can, can our kids take notes on computers now? What did, I mean, I mean, or do they still do that sort of thing?
We have, uh, the phone books. A lot of teachers do, do use that. A lot of teachers use the pen and paper thing. A lot of teachers give out the outline and then the kids have to fill that for them, right? That's to, to, for this. This is giving you like notes that you have to fill in.
Few of the teachers.
Make sure you guys do all of it.
Oh.
We all need this kind of pen and paper.
Wow. Bonus points for Mr. Moore for if he makes.
There are a few other teachers that you actually have to. I don't.
They fill in the notes. Yeah. They, they have the synopsis of what they're looking for and they fill in the rest of it.
They, they follow, but we, we, we encourage our teachers to, um, build self, so critical thinking skills and, um, self-sufficiency among our kids.
I think one of the things that, that maybe should make good success classes, the Cornell notes system and that's, that goes beyond just taking the notes. It's taking the notes in a way that you can use them later for studying and learning. So that's, um, that's one of the most high school skills.
Well, I might take that class too because, um, I always had to, I, I would like try to write everything down the professor will say, you know, and you just really can't keep up. So last question I have. How long does it take, do you think, for a fifth grader to transition to be a sixth grader going from class to class to class versus, you know, in elementary school, you're just like in one room, you know, eight hours and so on.
There's plenty of kids.
Yeah.
Um, I, but I think generally it takes them about the first quarter or something. Maybe the first half of the year.
Yeah. So I usually, I do charities in my class. I do sixth grade math too. Um, so I don't do charities in my class until the end of that first quarter.
Yeah.
So that's the first time that they can like get a charity that they get in trouble for. So I would say after the first quarter, I think they're, they're responsible enough to be able to manage getting on the building, knowing what the locker is, getting into it, getting ripped up.
Yeah. We have some sixth graders who still struggle with their locker. And we have some sixth graders who got their locker down half the first week. It really just depends upon the kid. And that's why we, we individualize and try to support all of our kids, no matter where they are. Um, because this is middle school. They're all over the place in their development and their thinking and their learning. And I was giving the analogy once of teaching middle school is like herding cats through a tree factory. And that is absolutely correct.
Any, any thoughts on how to make that transition? You guys that work in this town, any?
Um.
Their organization, just being able to keep track of their stuff. That's just.
Knowing where it is, what, what needs to be there. And yeah, if they can get themselves organized, carry that by their own.
We've talked about it with Michelle Marshall about maybe, um, making a little bit of summer school, like a little bit of orientation. Bringing the fifth graders over from the, a couple of days of summer school to getting used to the building, that kind of stuff. Um, something similar to what the ninth grade, incoming ninth graders get with the smart start, start smart, smart, smart start.
Yeah, that's good to me.
Um, program, um, would be helpful and I think doable. Um, you know, we just think we can kind of get it organized and, but we've been bouncing ideas back and forth on that. So.
We have a sixth grader who, that, uh, the day that they get to come by themselves was really helpful.
Yeah.
And they have, they have a lot of leadership kids there that first, that first day with the sixth grade. So they have, uh, their curious helping or not. Over teams and everything. And they also have the five day, you know, um, at the end of the school year.
Yeah. And I'd like to see us do even more to transition our eighth graders to high school. That's around the area where I think we could continue to build is, is reaching out to them because there's, you know, we have eighth graders who I think if they had a stronger connection to the high school, might comb it together and do better when they get there. If they could get that connection going like in the middle of the year, this as, mid-year as eighth graders, it would keep them on, you know, encourage them to keep on track, get their grades on track, stay on track. And then, you know, the transition would be easier. There'd be less work on that end and less likely to see them fall apart. So I think that's kind of one of our goals and something we'll be talking, I believe, um, with Rick about and planning with, uh, the community. Yeah, sorry.
The kids for anyone.
Yeah.
Well, that's cool.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. And, um, next up is, uh, Ms. Marshall for, for, to, to here.
I'm here.
All right. Go for it.
Can you, can you guys hear me okay from Walton?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, so I have a couple, one, two, three, four, like six things and I'll try to go through them pretty quickly, but feel free to stop me whenever. Um, the first thing is S R three. Last month, you guys approved like twenty different items that could fall under approved expenditures for capital improvements. Um, as you know, if it's over five thousand dollars, it's capital improvement. We have to submit an application to ODE. So after that approval, we moved forward with seven different projects. And six have been approved. One is pending. I had to resubmit it with some different language, but I'm not super concerned about that. Um, the seven items that we're focusing on right now is some district-wide carpet replacement. That's the one that's pending. Auto scrubber, two new auto scrubbers. So we're working on getting bids. So the HVAC balancing at EES that was suggested from the long-range planning facilities walkthrough. The roof repair and siding replacement at Veneta Elementary and they're working on getting bids for that. Um, FRMS intercom communication system. We, that one's kind of probably lower on the list just because we completed that project at the high school. We don't have to do as much legwork, we don't think. Um, asbestos removal district-wide. I think we're most likely going to focus starting at the high school library, but we had a full district asbestos inspection this year. So we can use kind of what they suggested were the number one areas. There was nothing that was, um, a huge safety concern, but there are things that we can do so that when we go to do remodels or updates or upgrades, we don't have to do as much abatement work. And then the last thing is the EHS bathroom remodel. Those are the bathrooms out in the courtyard that we're going to update to single stall restrooms with vape vandalism sensors. And we just got the first set of drawings maybe two weeks ago. So that's the seven S or three items that we're moving forward with right now. The next, any questions on those? Yeah.
HVAC.
Heat inhalation. It's like when you, things are out of balance in a building like that, you will, or a door will get stuck shut or fly open. There's something's out of whack with balancing the system and airflow. And typically a few years into a new building, this can be something they have to do, but instruction said, he thinks it's out of whack and we should have some. Instruction said he thinks it's out of whack and we should have somebody go through that.
Okay.
Yeah, so we're gonna look into that one. Uh, the next topic was math curriculum adoption update. I just wanted to give you guys all a heads up kind of where we're at because I'm hoping to get board approval at the June school board meeting. So here in the next few weeks, most schools have narrowed down to their top two, if not their top choice. Uh, K five, they have two choices that they're looking at. They think they have their top choice. Some of the teachers are like piloting lessons. We're really working with the, um, publishers to talk about their digital platforms, things like that. Middle school has their top choice. I'm kind of trying to narrow down quotes and professional development planning for them. And then the high school has what they feel like is their top choice, but they have one more that they're looking at. All of those are, you know, kind of getting quote phases. I, I know, um, the elementary quotes are coming in around two hundred and fifty thousand. The middle school quotes around a hundred and fifty thousand right now. And I haven't been able to get one back from high school yet. It probably won't be nearly as much as the K eight, just because we're looking at geometry and algebra versus the entire four-year math program because O D E is doing new math standards at the high school level and a new math model. It's the two plus one. So that makes it a little bit trickier for our high school teams. Um, any questions on math? So then the next thing, just so you know, once we get our top choices, I'll do a website post and that'll be open for public review. So I'll put like what all of our choices are. People can send me an email. They can, um, complete a Google form, whatever they want to do. If they want to provide feedback, if they want to come to the D O and look at the curriculum, they're welcome to do that. So we'll leave that. I'm hoping to get it up there by the first of June. So that'll give two weeks before a school board, if, if anybody has really any major concerns. Everything that we're looking at has already been approved, uh, by O D E. So hopefully there's nothing too tricky about our next steps. Outside of funding it. Um, the next topic I just wanted to share with you guys is where we're at on our integrated plan. And the integrated plan is the O D E combination of six initiatives. The high school success, measure ninety-eight, student investment account, continuous improvement plan, career and technical education, everyday matters and early indicator and intervention system. So what we've done is we've submitted our budget and our activity plans. Those have been approved. And I think Gary shared with you that a couple of weeks ago, we were one of forty-seven school districts that had gotten to the next phase out of a hundred and ninety-seven. So I was super happy about that. Our, our next step is, um, meeting with an O D E team on June first. And we have to create our longitudinal performance growth targets. Those are based on the third grade S back, ninth grade on track, four-year graduation, five-year finisher and, uh, attendance. So what we'll do is we'll look at our five years of past data. We'll look at the top growth of the top ten percent of school districts in the state. And we'll kind of look at, okay, how much are we setting our goals at each percentage for the next three years? And what we want is to say, okay, we're using these funding dollars and we're using these activities. We want to see growth in these areas. So that's our next step. That's June first. And we'll take a team of ki- kind of a variety of folks, primarily admin, but also, uh, Mr. Goldiger from the high school who's in charge of the high school success, measure ninety-eight. Also our family liaison will participate in some of the conversation. And maybe Becky DeBay who's student services. The next, any questions on any of that so far? No, great. So clear. Um, the next thing is our equity action plan. So this year our district equity team, we have reps from each building. We've really been trying to come together to kind of keep equity conversation at the forefront and not just trying to check off the boxes of compliance, which is fine too. But it's really trying to keep our buildings growing and creating this infrastructure of knowledge around equity and the things that we're doing as a district altogether. So the team meets monthly. We hired a gentleman named Darren Riley to help facilitate and kind of guide the group work. And where we have been able to get to is that we've gotten three district goals. And, um, so I presented those goals to admin last week. And what we'll do is we'll continue to kind of create some activities around that. So goal one is to build district and building level capacity to enact equity framework. Goal two is incorporate the equity lens into the culture of every school in F R S D. Goal three is build and refine the system for gathering data and responding to it. So like goal two, one example of that is having our equity lens stands tool and available at meetings. And that's something that we can do pretty easily. And by having that document in front of folks, hopefully it'll stay at the forefront of their brains. Um, so that's where we're at. We've kind of landed on our goals. We're coming up with our activities. Almost our last topic, but not quite, summer program update. We have been working super hard. Billy Perry is doing a lot of the legwork and I'm supporting her through that and, uh, working with the building administrators to kind of help organize what's going on. But we have staff working nineteen days. We have over thirty staff members signed on to work. That's a huge chunk of our folks that are saying, yep, this is important work and we're willing to give up nineteen days of our summer to do it. And that doesn't include chart wells for student, artists and residents, anybody like that. Um, we'll have the kids program again. We'll have a K five program, a six-eight program and a nine-twelve program. We'll have, the nine-twelve will have some in-person and some online through edgenuity. Uh, K eight will be all in person. And then the last thing I wanted to just give you guys an update, just because I don't think you need to do board approval, but I'll probably put something on the website here in the next few weeks is, um, O D E has updated their requirements around tag, talented and gifted. And while we already have a tag plan and our district actually has had a tag plan for the last few years when you weren't required to have one and post it, which we've done that. But they've changed the template and they've added a lot of different pieces that we have to speak to. So I went to a training just a few weeks ago and the O D E person encouraged districts to file for an extension so that they could spend more time reflecting on this new template and looking at exemplars. So we filed for an extension until June sixth. But O D E hasn't posted any exemplars yet. So I'm kind of just sitting waiting patiently. Um, if I don't hear back from them here soon, I'll probably just keep working on the draft that I have and we'll go from there. And that's all I've got.
Great, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Michelle.
Yeah, thank you guys. Sorry I'm not there. I've got a sick kid here at home. Next month.
Alright, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
You heard a lot today, so I'll just keep it to one item, kind of some good news. You recall three or four years ago, we used some of our S A money to make high school athletics free. You know, significant cost is if I got multiple kids that do multiple sports. Um, pay to play was a hundred and twenty-five dollars for each sport. We made that free. Uh, th- this year, for the last couple of months, I've been working on a plan and process to have no fees in our district K twelve next year. Um, so I think I'm on track. So there's a bunch more work to do. What that will look like, once we get it finalized, probably start promoting that in July over the summer, certainly before school registration, is that the elementary school, we will only have one fee right now, a school supply fee. Uh, thirty dollars, I think. Um, they won't have that anymore. Use our S A dollars to plant, transfer money to the student body gown at Venita Elementary. Um, so they have that money to buy school supplies. There's no school supply list for any parents. And there used to be before we had this school supply fee, parents got a list, they had to go shopping, bring all the stuff, box, Kleenex, Remo paper, pencils. We went with the school supply fee so teachers could buy at a bulk, cheaper prices. Um, now we're just gonna waive that. We use our S A dollars. At the middle school, there's a couple of fees, uh, there, some student body card fee, planner fee, the eligibility planner there. Instrument rental, uh, is another one. Uh, those fees again, we're gonna use our S A dollars. The only fees at the middle school will be optional ones. Um, yearbook, one of my yearbook, that's a fee I could pay and optional P T shirts, it will be another. At high school, there's lots of fees. Um, art, ceramics, drawing, carpentry, auto, audio visual, Spanish workbook, two dollars for math notebook, um, a wide range of fees. And we're gonna cover them all with S A. The only fee at high school will be, uh, two voluntary ones. Or, oh, we destroy metal, that's another one that will be free. Um, A S B sticker, if I want an A S B circle, I need to pay for that. I get some mini games free. Parking pass, they want to grab school park in the parking lot, uh, I'll still need to pay for a parking pass and yearbook. Um, so again, still a bunch of work to do around this to get it lined up, to get all this, these dollars transferred to the brokerage accounts come July, uh, but I think it's something that we can accomplish within our current S A budget. Um, and we will start to promote as soon as it's finalized, that parents have no fees, required fees in our district, starting April. That's all I have.
A question about the fees, just quick, um, when I was at high school with you, kids had to buy their, pay for the cap and gown and then for this summer?
Uh, that's exactly what I had and thought about that. No, traditionally, um, cause they order their cap and gown, you know, through minors and there's lots of options, you know, adding on, uh, that's where they get their announcements and, um, all kinds of things. We do have, uh, plenty of scholarship money available, you know, like we did. If there's any kid in need for cap and gown, we can handle it. Um, but that is something that will be covered as a fee.
Thank you. Uh, moving on to discussion items, we have, uh, resolution for student trans- transfers. Is there something you want to talk about then?
I don't have any questions.
Alright.
To you, Barbara.
Alright, go for it.
So I move that we approve the resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three slash eleven regarding student transfers.
I second.
Alright, we have a motion and a second to approve, uh, the resolution twenty-two dash twenty-three slash eleven. Any discussion on that? Very none? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Um, we also have a second reading on proposed policy update. For in district transfer students, we've had time to look at this one. Any discussion on that before we need a motion to approve it? Alright. So I didn't entertain a motion to prove the.
I move that we approve, uh, the O S B model policy J E C B B intra-district transfer students.
I second it.
So we have a motion and a second and any other discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five to zero. Thank you. As far as personnel, we have a number of, uh, license employees that are hiring and, um, most, and that one resigna- a couple of resignations and a transfer. And we do need board approval for those.
I make a motion that we accept the resignations, new hires, transfers. You know?
Yep.
Um, as listed, um. Is that it?
Yeah.
As listed. I will say.
I second.
Alright, we have a motion, a second to accept, um, the resignation, new hires and transfers. Any discussion? All of the favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I just want to say that Brian Brands, although I, we've known that he is, has been looking for another job for quite a while to reduce his commute time. He's gonna be very missed, but I also look forward to Yoki taking over, so.
Definitely, yeah.
Good for him.
Yeah. That'll save a lot of time. Ten years, yeah, so you know he's driven to here. Yeah. Alright, and we do have a few, uh, non-licensed, just for information. Um, we have, uh, a new custodian that we hired and then also a resignation of Rich Jones as our girls JV basketball coach. Alright, so at this point, we actually are moving into, um, executive session uh, under O R S one nine two point six six zero two D, uh, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by the governing body to carry on labor negotiations. So we will not be making any decisions, uh, during the executive session and, um, we will come out of executive session and adjourn the meeting or make a decision in public. If there's a decision to be made, but I believe it's mostly information.
So I just want to confirm for Michelle that we, we need, Lori and I need to, uh, leave this meeting and, uh, use the lengthy Zoom link that you provided for the executive session.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I text.
Okay, then, quality is usually the goal.
Okay. Alright, thank you all for coming.
Yeah. Because she gets too bad.
Yes.
How long does your executive session?
As long as it takes.
About.
It just, it varies because we don't do it very often.
Ten minutes to an hour?
Sure, yeah, pretty much, yeah.
We could have adjourned.
No, I'm listening.
We could have adjourned and then done the exam after. If you want to adjourn.
If we, we could, uh, I, I don't think there's gonna be any decisions made after the executive session, right? This is for information only, so.
So after your executive session, do you come back and do you say what your decision is?
There will be a decision made.
You're just gonna go with that big question, that's it.
Correct, and then this is, because he's providing the information about labor negotiations. So there won't be any voting during executive session. If there was, uh, there was information, like for instance, when we had the, um, the superintendent's, um, evaluation. So after that, we came out of the executive session and then approved his contract for next year.
Okay, I did, I wanted to ask that last time and I didn't, so.
Yeah, that's a problem.